Good afternoon. It is four thirty PM on Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We will call the city council meeting of the city of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point one liquor permit for B and L Bar Incorporated.
I'll make the motion to approve issuance of a liquor permit for the B and L Bar Incorporated to serve alcohol at the Between Two Breweries event on Saturday, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four at South Park from noon to six thirty PM, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point two annual on sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday liquor license.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of an on sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday liquor license for Aztecs Mexican Restaurant Bar and Grill Incorporated, four hundred North Minnesota Street for the period beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, subject to all compliance with city and state requirements.
Second. And I I do just want to say, the work that you guys are doing on that is remarkable. So keep, keep it up. And thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
When do you hope to open?
Hopefully July first.
Excellent.
Nice. Well, good. Welcome to our town.
Yeah.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I would just also like to say welcome and thank you to to be seen that building being used is great and we look forward to having you guys. Those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. Item number two point three temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Bavarian Blast.
I'll offer motion to approve the issuance of the temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Bavarian Blast to sell alcohol during their event at the Brown County Fairgrounds for the period beginning Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four through Sunday, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point four tree service license.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a tree service license for Jim Gastonik, one twenty-seven North Franklin Street. How bad did I butcher that name?
Gastonik?
Okay.
That's pretty close.
For the period beginning June fifth and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I just assume he's the homeowner and he's just taking care of his own trees. Is so what he's?
Typically, a tree servants service license is for those that are looking to perform tree service work for those within the city limits. But Chris, can you kind of maybe expand on?
I honestly don't know. Janine handles the licenses when they come in, so I don't know the details.
Would be outside of his own property.
Too cheap for a business, yeah.
Okay. Freelance. All right.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving on to item number two point five, a fireworks license.
I'll make a motion to offer the issuance of a fireworks license for American promotional events. TNT Fireworks Incorporated, four thousand three, Helton Avenue, Florence, Alabama, to sell fireworks in the Walmart parking lot, seventeen twenty West Ridge Road, New Ulm, for the period beginning June twentieth and ending July fifth.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point six rideshare services license to David Falk.
I'll offer motion to approve the issuance of rideshare services license to David Falk, twenty-four South Payne Street, New Ulm, Minnesota, for the period beginning June fifth, two thousand twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I know that we've approved quite a few of these. Do we know how many are still active or is that something we can find out or?
I think there are three. Speaking with someone that there's three that are active right now.
Three that are act-
Yeah.
They're active. Yes. There's one I understand that isn't doing it right now, but we'll renew her license if-
Or maybe some during festivals and, okay. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point seven general license renewals for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of the following renewals of general licenses for the period beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements, including tobacco, fireworks, retail sellers, kennel, sheep is still on the list, solid waste haulers, taxi cab, rideshare services, and tree services.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Do we still have sheep out at Southside Auto?
Yep. That's the one. Yep.
Yep.
That was Joel Aubrecht's big thing way back. Lots of humor about that process back then.
They certainly serve a purpose, right?
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number three point one. We have some work being done on the new comprehensive plan.
Madam President, members of the city council, I would like to present the draft comprehensive plan dated June two thousand twenty-four to the city council for your review and approval. So John and I are jointly going to make this presentation. So I'm going to start and then John's going to step in and then I will end this matter. First off, does the city council mayor, does anybody have any questions about the plan that you'd like to start off with?
All my questions have been answered.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, you're, you're all good? Okay. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the comprehensive plan following a public hearing at their May thirtieth meeting. There was no public comments. The commission discussed it amongst themselves and had a good discussion. So they're recommending approval. A little bit about the history of the comprehensive plan in the city of New Ulm. We actually had a comprehensive plan in the mid nineteen sixties. It was part of what was in a federally financed program called the seven oh one program. Then in May seventh, nineteen ninety-six, and now the current plan that we have, it was adopted in September fourth, two thousand seven. So we've had two plans. This would be the third. The definition for a comprehensive plan, it's an official public document adopted by a local unit of government as a policy guide to decisions about the physical development of the community. And there are three characteristics about a comprehensive plan. One, that's comprehensive. Two, that it's general. Three, that's long range. So this plan is intended to last for twenty years with reviews during that time period. And I might note that it's, I think, fortunate that you'll be receiving a report on a strategic plan following this matter. And so you'll have an opportunity to note the differences between the two. Comprehensive plan is one of the most important documents that that the city has since it lays the foundation for its land use management and control of properties both in and outside of the city. So your zoning ordinance, your zoning map, your subdivision regulations are all intended to carry out the general provisions of the comprehensive plan. Now, there are four area plans that were part of the contract that was issued to Shord Elliott Hendrickson to provide consulting services for the comprehensive plan. Those four area plans are not yet complete. The four area plans were for Upper Cottonwood, Downtown, East Airport, and Northwest New Ulm-Milford. We expect within a month's period of time to have those and we would go through the same approval process as we are with the comprehensive plan. Now, I believe the staff has three options, or not, I'm sorry. The the council has three options with regards to how you address this particular item. You can approve the new comprehensive plan as presented. It's option one. Option two is you can approve the new comprehensive plan with amendments or changes. And option three is you can defer action on the new plan and request additional information or changes. And it should be noted that the staff would like the ability to still make minor technical and text corrections which are inevitable in a document this size. So the city council retained Shord Elliott Hendrickson back in May of two thousand twenty-two. So this project has taken approximately two years. I'd like to talk a little bit about the public engagement. We had over twenty-four hundred participants that provided input through two online surveys. We had over two hundred comments and ideas that were received on four interactive maps that were on the city's website. We had seven projects during committee meetings. The project steering committee consisted of the planning commission and then members of different organizations that would have an interest in something like this. We had a representative from the PUC. We had the township Milford and Cottonwood provided representatives that attended. So we had that type of participation. We had five in-person events that had over a hundred participants. And then we had the open house that was held recently and approximately thirty-five people attended that. Back in two thousand seven, we had an open house for that comprehensive plan as well. And we had four people that participated or were present. So we've, we've improved in that, in that respect. And I will have to say the public engagement, I thought this time around, if you wanted to comment about this comprehensive planning process, you had the opportunity to do so. So the comprehensive plan itself is divided into ten chapters. And the first chapter is purpose and vision. Some of the more notable things within that section are, you know, statutory authority is identified, that we're legally authorized to do this. Definitions are provided for opportunities, goals, and strategies. And that's important because those three items show up in chapters four through nine. Each chapter has opportunities, goals, and strategies. So this gives you an idea of what those definitions are for those terms. There's a vision statement that is provided and then the organization of the plan is, is laid out. The second chapter has to do with community profile. And the first two items kind of are, they're different, but they're similar. The first is community history and the second is the original town plat. And I, I want to talk just a little bit about the original town plat because this is one of the few occasions when we do a comp plan that we get to go back and look at these things. And I, I don't know that we realize what a unique document or town plat is. I mean, I don't think anybody else, you know, at least in the state of Minnesota, has anything like what, what we started from. Town plat was originally done by a gentleman by the name of Christian Pregnance. Eighteen fifty-seven is when he did it. It was a town was officially platted in eighteen fifty-eight. Now, the plat is notable due to its scale, its symmetry, and also it does set up a gateway from the town to the river. And you have to remember, back then, the river was a major source of transportation for a variety of different purposes. The Pregnance was, was a Turner. And so he, you know, applied some of the Turner principles in the, in the plat. And those included both social and political views. It's kind of difficult to do some of that in a plat, but that was the attempt. Some of their guiding principles had to do with social equality and a cooperative economy. So building placement and equal lot size is one way that they express that. The symmetry in the placement of parks and significant amounts of public lands was another. And the street layout and the grid pattern that was adopted is, is part of that as well. As far as the town plat itself, I'm kind of curious, how many blocks do we have in the grid part of New Ulm? Does anybody want to venture a guess?
I'll give the closest guess. I don't want to say.
Okay, three hundred ninety-four. So how many lots does that result? So over five thousand lots that we have in the grid part of the community. Now, surrounding the grid part of the community, we have outlots. And those outlots total four hundred ninety-four. And they're all were intended to be four acres. So then looking at street width, we have streets of a hundred twenty, eighty, and sixty. That's the only three widths that we had. And I, whenever I see those widths, the first thing I think is in eighteen fifty-seven, you know, why am I plating streets that are eighty feet wide and a hundred twenty feet? If anybody knows, let me know after the meeting. And then the final thing that I wanted to just point out is that German Park in the original town plat, how big was it? It was a hundred and two acres. Think about how large that is. It extended from German Street down to Valley Street and from Seventh North to Seventh South. That is a large parcel of property. So the turnvaline philosophy, among other things, strongly believed in physical education activities, particularly gymnastics. And this philosophy is best described in the statement Sound Mind, Sound Body. And it's nice to note on the door down at the recreation center to the gymnastics center that that motto is, is there. So the Turners encouraged the city to preserve, protect, and provide recreational opportunities in both existing and future parks, open space, and natural area for use by all of its residents. So the founders of the community wanted a robust, active, and strong park and recreation program. And I don't think they wanted to be second to anybody else. And so that, that type of park and recreation program really is a legacy of the community and something that we should be known for. Another thing that we noticed or we developed coming out of this planning process is that we have two rivers. And in some sense, we've maybe haven't used them to the greatest extent possible, both from the standpoint of identification of the community, but secondly, for recreational and leisure activities as well. And so you'll note in the comprehensive plan an emphasis upon doing things in, in those particular areas. Now, I'd like to go back to Christian Pregnance just for just a couple of comments. And this, this, there's a quote that came from a book that was done by Evan Jones. It was called The Minnesota Forgotten River and is published in eighteen sixty-two. And he states that Christian Pregnance had a glowing vision of his city's future. The bearded, blue-eyed young German saw rising above the river a community that one day would have from seventy-five thousand to one hundred thousand inhabitants. Now, we're a little behind, but I'm sure we can make, make it up in the next century. And that is the basis for the size of German Park.
Yes.
Was to be able to accommodate all of those people. Chapter three has to do with community participation engagement. We've gone through some of that. But there were two questions that were asked as part of the survey that I want to talk about the results that we received. One of the questions was, what do you like most about living in New Ulm? And this was really question number one in the survey that was done. And the answer to that was, the first thing was it's a clean and well-maintained community. What that says to me is blight enforcement is something that people want to see. The second thing they said is- The second thing they said is parks, trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities. So people support, you know, our park and rec programs. Third thing was family-oriented. Fourth was safety. Fifth was atmosphere character. And the sixth was small town with access to larger cities. The second question that I'd like to draw attention to is, what should the city's top priorities for the future be? Number one was to add businesses and shopping downtown. Number two was maintain quality schools. Three was be open and welcoming to new ideas for the future. Four was encourage new development in and around downtown. Fifth was develop more housing options, increase the availability of housing. And the sixth was expand or improve parks, trails, natural areas, and recreation facilities. In this section of the plan, we also have a section on what people love the most about New Ulm, what people would like to change, and what people want to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Schnelbrecht and Mr. Nicely.
Thank you, John Nicely, planner with the city of New Ulm. I'm going to be going through chapters four through nine. And just to start off with, all of these chapters are organized generally the same way. They have a purpose statement, an introduction, a description of whatever the chapter is, future needs and opportunities, and goals and policies. I'm not going to go through each one of those as we look at each one of these slides, but I did want to highlight just a few things in each chapter that I think the public might find interesting, you might find interesting. So I'll just take a few minutes to do that. So chapter number four is land use. You could argue that this is probably one of the most important chapters of the entire document as it shapes those documents Dave mentioned before, zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and so on. But in our land use, we have land use, land use chapter, we have land use categories. Our largest land use type in the city of New Ulm, area that takes up the most amount of acreage, is parks, parks and open space. And that was, in two thousand and seven, that was one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five acres, okay? But that also, you have to think about, includes Flanders State Park, which is eight hundred and twenty-two acres alone, okay? You'll notice in the new future land use plan map that that amount of park acreage is greatly reduced. The major reason being that we gave the airports and its safety zones its own land use category. So we took that out of parks and open space. So if you see that difference, that's why. Couple of other things I wanted to talk about in chapter number four here is, looking from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, we had four percent population growth. It's anticipated between now and two thousand and thirty, we're going to have another three and a half percent population growth. That's equivalent to around five hundred people. So we need to think about that as we look into the future. How are we going to house those people? Where are they going to live in our community? The really interesting fact is, those numbers were almost identical to the two thousand and seven comprehensive plan. We took a look at affordability of homes in New Ulm and talked with contractors in the area. It's really difficult to build a single-family home right now in New Ulm with building costs under three hundred thousand dollars. So how do we, how do we entice people to move here and find an affordable place to live when building costs are that high? It should be noted that we have really high home ownership and seniors still living in their homes, seventy-seven percent. And I want to make it abundantly clear, what we're talking about is, we don't want those seniors, we want those seniors to stay in their homes as long as possible. And whatever we can do to make that happen, we want to foster that. But if those seniors want to have, make the choice to leave that home and move to something that's maybe a little more simple, less maintenance, what options do we have for those folks to move to? We want to make sure that we have that in place so those options are available to seniors in our community. That also would then therefore free up those single-family homes that are already constructed to new people looking to move into our community. There are eleven land use categories in our land use chapter. We have low-density, medium-density, high-density, residential, manufactured home parks, commercial, industrial, mixed-use downtown. That's a new one because we wanted to make sure that we included residential as a part of the downtown landscape, parks and open space, public and semi-public lands, airport safety zones, and undeveloped property. I would note that if you are looking or comparing our previous land use, comprehensive land use map compared to the new one, the future one, there are no significant changes. And what I mean by that is, we didn't take a bunch of residential property and in the new map turn it over to industrial, or take a bunch of low-density residential and change it into high-density residential. So there should be no surprises for the council when they look at that. Okay, that's the longest I'll talk about a single chapter here, okay? I promise. Chapter five is housing. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had six thousand two hundred and twenty-seven housing units. Seventy-four percent of those were single-family. In two thousand and seven, when we did the comprehensive plan, only seventy percent of the total housing units were single-family. So that number has increased. I want to make sure that we all understand the term housing unit. We use it in this chapter quite a bit. Housing unit is the physical housing structure. And then you'll also see another term in this chapter called a household. Those are basically the occupants of those structures. We just, you'll see that throughout the chapter, and I just want to make sure we're clear on that. The last housing study in two thousand and twenty-two noted that we had ninety-four percent of our housing units occupied with six vacant or not available. So when you see that six percent, that doesn't act vacant or unavailable, that might mean that that home just simply, someone doesn't want to rent out. They want to leave it unoccupied. And I also, another thing I really want to highlight in here, you hear the term all the time, affordable housing. What does that actually mean? We define it in this chapter, and that basically means that when an occupant is spending less than thirty percent of their gross income on housing. So when we talk in terms of affordable housing, we need to keep that in mind. We are anticipated to have a general occupancy demand increase by two thousand and thirty of three hundred and sixty-four housing units. In that same date range, for the senior demand, we're going to increase four hundred and forty units. So we really need to take that into consideration when we're taking a look at our housing and how that's working out in the city of New Ulm. Transportation, this chapter clearly focuses on safety. This is the chapter that includes trails, future trail maps and our existing trail maps, and it has a lot of emphasis on active transportation. It discusses those automotive points of entry into the city. We've got to remember, those are the places where most of visitors coming to New Ulm are coming through. What's their first impression of New Ulm? What do we want it to look like? Do we need to do something different in those areas to kind of beautify them and provide people with a great first impression on the city? We have a large amount of information on complete streets here. We also take a look at sidewalks, trails, and also our crossings for the pedestrian Chapter seven is economic development. Couple of interesting notes here. The largest type of industry by employment in New Ulm is manufacturing. That's followed fairly closely behind by health and social assistance jobs. We have a very low unemployment rate in the city of New Ulm, two percent. That's great. At the same time, what that might mean for employers is when a job opening is coming up, they're taking from one business and they're moving that person over to another. And that leads me into the numbers of people that are commuting into New Ulm versus to work and then leaving to go back home versus living in the community. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting that we actually have about five thousand four hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty-eight people that commute into New Ulm to work every day, and those people leave at the end of the day and spend their time, money, and living in a different community, whereas we only have three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven people that live and work in New Ulm. Why is that? We need to think about, how do we get those people that are coming here to work to live in our community and spend more time in our community? Something we need to think of moving forward in the future here. Another thing I think we really need to highlight, and we highlighted in the comprehensive plan here, is that Brown County has the third lowest cost of living in the entire state of Minnesota. What I mean by that is your dollar goes farther here. So how do we market that to people? How do we get people to understand that when you buy a home in New Ulm, you're getting something that is reasonable and your job is, pays for that, and you still have a little bit of extra spending cash to take out? So. And also, in economic development, you also will see a emphasis on community image as well. We think it's important that New Ulm presents itself with a strong community image, and we wanted to make sure that that was highlighted in the comprehensive plan. Parks and Recreation, chapter eight. Their total of thirty-one park sites in the city of New Ulm. There's seven different park classifications, which do include schools and state parks. And I just wanted to note that because we're pretty fortunate that we have a state park right in our backyard. They have thousands of visitors that come through our community each summer and spend time in the state park. And our schools have been very gracious to allow the rest of the community to use their facilities as well, so we want to highlight that in our comprehensive plan. We discuss in this chapter the development of existing park property and what does it look like to develop new park property into the future. And as Dave noted earlier, parks is ranked very high in our community as one of the, one of the city's greatest assets. So we need to make sure that our Parks and Recreation chapter in the comprehensive plan is, is well-thought-out and well-written, and I think we did that. Last chapter I'm going to cover is Community Facilities and Utilities. And just for the public to know, the city provides water, sewer, gas, electric, stormwater, and district energy, also known as steam. And we, in this chapter, we look at our current capacity and all those different utilities that we provide, and what do we have available into the future? Meaning, do we have, for example, I would say, our wastewater treatment system? Do we have enough capacity if we were to have a large user come into New Ulm? If we do, then we want to be able to highlight that, which we do. But we have other systems that, if we have a large user come in, we may need to upgrade. So what does that look like? How do we make sure we stay on top of this kind of thing so that we do, do not turn customers way out the door, potential customers way out the door? They also take a look at broadband services and internet services within the community and, and how those are also being enhanced since we now almost have fiber across the entire city of New Ulm. So any questions for me on chapters four through nine? I'd breeze through that pretty quick. Apologize.
You have a question, but I'm going to wait and see if you answer it.
Okay, the implementation section, which is chapter ten, the first thing in that section talks about the use of the plan as a guide to decision-making. So this, you know, is a document that the Planning Commission, City Council, other boards and commissions should be using in making decisions about the future of the community. And capital improvements programs, you know, the state statute allows for those to go through the Planning Commission for their review. So the, you know, with the council's direction to do so, Planning Commission can play a greater role in assisting the council with, with many of these types of items. The other implementation tools, you know, you've, you've heard about, or, you know, and those are the zoning ordinance, subdivision. We have orderly annexation agreements, which will help us implement the comprehensive plan. Those are coming up for renewal. We have extraterritorial jurisdiction. What that means is we've extended our subdivision regulations out to match our electric service territory area. Another item that we don't have, well, we have it by department, is capital improvement plans. We really should have a city capital improvement plan where we take the, we have some individual departments now that have them. We should be bringing them all under one umbrella. And, you know, that's something that typically would be staff-initiated. You can involve the Planning Commission in something like that, or it can go directly to the city council for a review and approval. In the last legislative session, the need for a capital improvement plan came up in discussion, a discussion about the use of bonding dollars. So there may be, you know, a reason, a strong reason for, for having that. Updating the plan, you know, it should be reviewed every two years, major updates every ten years. For sure, after twenty years, you should be doing a new one. Then we identified implementation tasks, and we did it by chapter. And so in land use, there are five tasks. Housing has five, transportation, five, economic development, six, park and rec, four, and community facilities and utilities, four. And I will note that we asked the Planning Commission to take a look at those and to identify what they think should be the top task in each of those categories, and we will share the results of that recommendation with you. So that kind of concludes the comprehensive plan, the draft plan that we are recommending for adoption. So that's the end of one part, but really, there's a second part now that starts, and that's to implement the recommendations from the plan. I want to extend some thank yous because this didn't just happen, you know, just John and myself. You know, Joey Shugel with Park and Rec helped us out, Joe Stotheim, the city engineer, Chris Manterfeld down at the PUC, Heather Bregel in housing and economic development, Elwood Zabel in the billing department, and then the members of the project steering committee, which there were about twelve of those that helped out as well. That would conclude the staff report side of this.
Both are short. First one is probably the comment that I heard the most at this city council over sixteen years regarding our comprehensive plan was the old plan saying, everybody should live within five blocks of a park. What does the new one say regarding that issue?
Well, it actually provides two different stands, standards. One is a quarter mile, and the other is a half mile. So what we're seeing in the industry is both of those are being used. You know, in the ideal world, you like to be within a quarter mile, but a half mile is considered acceptable as well.
A little more than five blocks.
What's that?
A little more than five blocks.
That's a little bit more than that, yeah.
Good, thank you. And I understand, if I remember right, from two years ago when this process started, COVID money paid for this, correct, Chris?
Yes.
And this cost was over a hundred thousand dollars, correct? Are we real close to that?
Hundred ninety-nine.
It's a hundred and ninety-nine.
Then lastly, my comment is, as you kind of already did a little bit of that, Dave, but this is a huge project, and it was over two years that you guys worked on this. And it's something that I've been pushing, gosh, five, six years ago, as you probably remember. And every year, the budget was too expensive, and it got cut for the next year, cut for the next year. And I'd get frustrated, we got to do this, we got to get this up to date. So I'm so glad this is done. And I want to thank all of the staff, and not only your department has, but there's also folks in between there that were helping out. And it's something you guys should really be proud of. This is a huge document with some great information, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I know, just looking through this, you know, being very close to what's going on, you know, I'm hearing all of the things and seeing, you know, as we read through it, all of the things that I continue to hear and see. And I really wanted to take some time to kind of thank that steering committee as well because, you know, seven meetings, that's a big obligation. And to just hear the increases in the community interaction and support and more people coming out to hear this, I mean, that is really great and really is a testament of the fact that, you know, we, everybody knows, you know, we're moving in the right direction as a city. You know, we're listening, we understand what our needs are, we're taking those things into consideration. You know, the housing numbers, that's really daunting, but last year on EDA with me, you know, you know that
Got stuff coming?
That there's, you know, we're working on it, and everything just takes time, but I, it's, I mean, the zoning, the planning, the everything. it's, I mean, the zoning, the planning, the everything. So I know that it was a very, very big undertaking and just want to thank you guys. And that we know that we need to kind of budget for these things moving forward and, you know, that there are going to be changes to it and, you know, little tweaks over time, but that this is a really, really great foundation. So thank you guys so much.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and offer the resolution approving the new comprehensive plan with no recommended changes dated June 2024 for the city of New Ulm, Minnesota.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Any other input from councilors or the mayor?
I just want to ditto what President Becker and Councilor Soul said. Thank you to the staff and the numerous citizens who did help and the input in.
The resolution?
Yes.
All right. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Item number 4.1, we do have a presentation by Bolton and Mink on the New Ulm strategic plan. So we're switching gears a little bit. And we do have Moira Howenstein here from Bolton and Mink. Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Moira Howenstein, I'm a senior planner with Bolton and Mink, and we have the honor of being hired to work with you and co-create the strategic plan for the city of New Ulm and the community. We've actually partnered with Group Creatives. They are well-known for their strategic plan portfolio nationally, not just with government agencies, but also with non-governmental agencies, so a lot of nonprofits. And so we've partnered with them. You've had the opportunity to meet with Teva. She's one of the members from Group Creatives and myself last week. Thank you so much individually for your interviews and your valuable input. We've also met with executive staff and the city manager and the mayor as well. So there's a much bigger team behind just Teva and myself. We have GIS, engineering, marketing, communications, engagement, and of course, strategic planners and then land use planners as well. So the New Ulm strategic plan is really lined up with what we just heard about the comprehensive plan, and we'll talk about some of the differences in a minute. But it's more operational and strategic in nature. It's really more about, okay, we have a vision for the entire community, not just the physical development of the actual city. It is more about where do we allocate resources to make those goals and strategies happen? And it's a much shorter time span. It's five years. So it's a little more urgent than the 20-year span that we see in a comprehensive plan. So those are some of the main differences. We really want to establish that vision and mission. And just as a reminder, we do know about the draft vision and goals in the comprehensive plan. Those will be folded in to the strategic plan, but we're staying in a pyramid, a little bit higher on the pyramid than the actual comprehensive plan. We are going at an operational level to really define what this board is going to be guided by. What are those principles? What are those decision-making values and ethics that guide your decision-making at an operational level? And where are the resources going? How are those being allocated based on goals? So that is the critical difference. The vision is really, we call it the self-fulfilling prophecy. It is something that is aspirational for the community to decide what it wants to be in five years. The mission is, how do we get there? What are the values? What are the principles by which we're going to be guided? And those are really useful when there's a little bit of conflict or, you know, different agendas or maybe a disagreement. We go back to the strategic plan to get some clarity. So it's going to be a very useful guide, just like the comprehensive plan. Part of the, part of this effort is really to connect with the community. And what we are going to do is not just look at who lives here, but also who works here, who recreates here, who visits, and then who invests. That's a really critical component of who's investing in our community currently and potentially in the future. So the project goals are to really connect with the community, understand the needs within the five years based on those goals. We are going to go out and define the vision, mission, and goals based on the themes that we are hearing from the community. We're going to organize those themes, bring them back to this board, check that they align with your direction as well. Maybe we've missed something, maybe we haven't heard something before, but we are going to use all of the work that's been done in previous studies and piggyback on the comprehensive plan as well. We will then prioritize those goals and strategies. And then the critical component of really executing and being strategic is to have the resources, the budget, the people, the capacity to actually execute. And then, of course, we will have a plan, but also we will have a digital presence and always trying to remember that this plan is not set in stone. It is to serve the community and serve the sport. And so it's going to be something that can be updated because in five years, the world will be very different. There will be emerging trends. And so just as a reminder that this is in service of you. So the past studies, you've done so much work, taxpayer dollars at work. We will use all of that data, fold it into the plan, and of course, we will look at the comprehensive plan. We will also look at some of the raw surveys that they've done and extracted and fold that in. We will also look at the housing study, the capital improvement plan that you currently have, the budget. We will look at that budget and see, do we have capacities for the goals that we are trying to execute? And do the action steps, how can those be separated into the first year versus the fifth year? There are other strategic plans that are really well-done. One of them is the libraries. And so we will look at those. And then also the Chamber, the Grand, the New Brick, other organizations have strategic plans, trying to just see what they are saying and how they align with what we are hearing from the community. As part of what we're going to do is look at the actual data, you may have a handout for the project that shows infographics. It's the way we like to communicate in a more visual way so that everyone from all abilities and all backgrounds can really understand the information. So it's more visual versus text-heavy. And then we blend that with what we're hearing with the previous studies, and we can project and look at some trends into the future. So the plan will have a vision, a mission, goals prioritized, and then implementation matrix similar to the comprehensive plan, but we will add to that resources to make those steps actually happen. And then we will add a dashboard just to keep ourselves accountable. It's always good to, because it's a shorter burn time of five years and a little more urgent, we want to be able to show progress. And so we will pick some key performance indicators to show us where we're at. In terms of how we communicate with the community, we take a hybrid approach. We do old school, in-person, paper, but we also do high-tech. So we're going to try to do all of it to be able to reach more people. And so we will have an interactive survey. We will do in-person workshops, in-person interviews. We will do pop-ups at events that are already happening, where people already are. And we will also do, at those pop-ups, not just interactive points where people can know about the project, but we'll also take the opportunity to get some input from the community. And then we will do three focus groups, and we will do three workshops with this board as well. At the end of it, we are not just going to have a plan that's text and bound and something that wants to sit on a shelf. We will have the digital version, and we will also do a pithy video so that we can communicate the findings to the community in a more just delightful way. That's an example of the data that we use, and just to show you the visuals of how we like to communicate, a little bit more infographic oriented. The bottom right, you will see a link for the project website, which is really just the digital platform for how we are going to communicate, apart from the paper flyers and the in-person interactions. We will post that on the city website soon, and also the flyers do have a QR code as an option as well. In terms of the timeline, we started in May, so we just started. We are planning to be done in the fall, so we are right now where the star is, and we are doing that initial community engagement to bring back to this board what we're hearing initially and the data distillation of existing plans and research. And then in the summer, we will be defining the vision, mission, goals, prioritization, and allocation of funding will occur at the very, very end, where we understand what we have capacity for. And so hopefully by September, October, we should have a strategic plan. So the next dates to keep in mind are, this week, we are conducting game changer interviews, and what those are is just incredible people in your community that have conducted businesses or achieved things that have had meaning, and so we are meeting with them individually. Then we will do a city council workshop on July 9th as part of your work session and bring back the initial findings and then get more of your insight, and then we will go back out to the community. So the stakeholder focus groups will occur after that initial workshop with you because we want to refine the message. And then we will go back to the community on July 23rd. And the pop-ups, we're thinking of doing one at the Bavarian Blast, and then the second one just a little bit later with a different purpose in August. So the comprehensive plan versus the strategic plan, the main differences are really the timeline, five-year versus 20-year. The strategic plan is more about how do we allocate resources for the action steps that are established versus the comprehensive plan. You've heard, I'm not going to reiterate the great presentation that just happened. But for the strategic plan, we do set some SMART key performance indicators. So when we say SMART, right, everyone knows that terminology, but I, just for everyone's benefit, I think it's important to just say it out loud. We want it to be specific, measurable. We want it to be achievable, relevant, and time-bound. So it has almost a sense of urgency to it, like what can we do within the next five years? And then both plans consider a unified vision. Both plans look at identity, they look at assets in the community, and really trying to meet what the community wants and needs. Putting those in actionable steps and then allocating a priority. We can't do everything all at once, and we can't necessarily have resources to execute it all. So this plan really puts that into measured steps. So with that, we want to thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to embark on this journey together. We want to make sure that the overview of the plan is what you expected, and just really checking in to see if there's something that we did not include that you would like us to consider. And with that, I'm also happy to take any questions.
Looks very thorough.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no action for item number 4.1, so we will move ahead to old business. Item number 5.1 is the second consideration and adoption of ordinance number 24-088, amending Chapter Two Administration and Procedure.
Council, this is the second consideration for the changes to the mayor, council president, counselor, and utility commission salaries. That will be in effect as of January 1. So the mayor's salary will increase to 13,500, the council president to 11,500, the counselors to 10,500, and the public utilities commissioners to $7,000. And those are annual salaries that are paid in monthly installments.
Thank you.
Like I said, today's a busy day. Sounds like we're going to have competition on the ballot, but again, I'm going to back that up about future councils, don't wait 10 to 12 years to do this. Do it on at least a four-year basis. I'll motion to conduct the second consideration and adopt ordinance number 24-088, amending Chapter Two, Section 2.21 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to the salaries of the mayor, council president, counselors, and other officials.
I'll second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.2, professional services contract for 2027 Garden Street Improvement Project. Mr. Stodheim.
Thank you, Madam President and State Councilors. As previously authorized, the city sent out solicitations for professional services for the design and project administration through the bidding phase for the 2027 Garden Streets Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project. Staff received and reviewed four proposals, and the ranking is included on the action form for your review. After review, we actually ended up, the review committee, we had two scores of 88.33 with SEH and Bolton and Mink, and we are recommending that the city council enter into contract with SEH due to their fee amount being lower than Bolton and Mink's.
We've worked with them before?
Worked with them in the past, yep. And all four proposals that we received were very well-done, so it was a good review process.
I'll offer a motion to award the contract to SEH Incorporated to provide professional services for the 2027 Garden Street Improvement Project, the amount of $331,000. Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6.1, under new business, the 2024 general obligation, permanent improvement revolving fund bonds. Director Jorgensen.
Mayor and councilors, this is the next step in the bonding process for the year. At this point, we plan to issue $3.885 million in bonds to fund the street projects. The sale will be on August 6 at 10:00 a.m., so you would approve it at that meeting that night. And I guess that's it. There will be more steps to come.
With that being said, I'll offer the resolution, authorize the issuance and establishing terms and conditions of the sale, and set the sale date for August 6, 2024, 10:00 a.m., the amount of $3,885,000 for general obligation, permanent improvement, revolving fund bonds, Series 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.2 is to schedule a joint city council and PUC commission informational meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve a schedule, a joint city council, Public Utilities Commission informational meeting at 3:30 p.m. on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, in the PUC front conference room to discuss the audited financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Can I change that? I didn't mean for the PUC conference room. It will be here in the chamber.
Okay.
We do have a motion and a second and a location change. It will be in here, the council chambers. Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.3, the New Ulm Battery Cannon Shoot and Music in Riverside Park.
I believe we have done this in the past, correct?
Yes.
I'll motion to authorize New Ulm Battery to conduct a cannon shoot at Riverside Park, 101 South Front Street during the American Legion Post 132 Music in Riverside Park event to fire up to 12 rounds from the cannon commemorating the event on Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.4 is to set a public hearing date for the unmanned aerial system program.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date for the New Ulm Police Department Unmanned Aerial System Program for Tuesday, June 18, 2024, at 4:30 p.m.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I'm just curious, who are we training to fly the drones themselves? I'm sorry, chief?
President Becker, members of the council, Dave Walker, chief of police. As far as training individuals, right now, we're going through the Part 107 certification. And when we say we, this is going to, we're treating this as a joint venture with the fire department and the police department. So we're having essentially five individuals from each department trained in it. And, you know, essentially, as many people as we can get certified, there's definitely a benefit for doing a search and rescue operation or other applications as well. there's definitely a benefit for doing a search and rescue operation or other applications as well. You know, the more individuals that are certified to do that, we can kind of delegate that responsibility with multiple people. Right now, we have a contract pilot because we don't have the certification yet. We're being trained, and we're actually being trained by this individual. He's helping us along. His name is Adam Towles, and he's under contract, and we've worked with him before. Does a great job.
Assuming at this public hearing, we'll learn about how high they fly and where they can fly and what reasons they fly and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yes, we'll be ready to present on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.5, a library donation.
I'll offer the resolution to accept library donation from Friends of the New Ulm Public Library in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
Thank you, we do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I would just like to note on the overview that the Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, so this donation is intended to support equipment and supply for purchases for the library's new video gaming club for teens in grade 6 to 12. And so they're going to meet in June. And so that's what this donation is going to support, which is good. We need to keep morphing and helping kids find, you know, things to do. And I think that that's great, so.
For sure.
Okay, Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 6.6 is funding to purchase Georgia's ballroom from the state. Mr. Dalton?
Council, President Councillors, this is just
You made your motion before we even spoke.
Go ahead, if you want to approve it without me speaking, I'm absolutely fine with that. You know, just a little bit of background, this is just for acquiring the land from the state, using our land acquisition fund. We do have funds available for that. So what we would be doing is, this is just the initial step to approve using the funds. At the next council meeting, you'll have a recommendation from the Georgia Steering Committee for the forgivable loan promissory note. And, I'm blanking, one more document to approve to the county. Once the county approves that, then we will then purchase the land and then do a quick claim deed over to CBC Fisher Group, and then they'll be able to start the demo process because they can't do a demo until they physically own, so.
I will be overwhelmed to approve the use of the land acquisition fund in the amount not to exceed $56,000 to acquire Georgia's ballroom from the state.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That does carry. Our last item of business today is report of claims paid, item number 7.1.
I'll make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of $2,655,280.88.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That does carry and with no additional business. Today, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.